Man, wouldn't that be cool?
The meeting is the title of the day. So if you could...
AJ.
Man, to task.
Mason, Ethan and Charlie were getting some city sugar and Randy Mark.
Right.
Thank you for joining us today. We hope you enjoy the show. If you'd like to join us anytime soon, we'll be there.
Yep, okay.
Good. You don't have to give me one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Number seven.
You can remember.
So then we were talking and I mean.
That money's not gonna do one really.
So it's a reimbursement.
Um, so we turn in invoice, so we spend the money and then turn in the invoices to get reimbursed.
But it's a guarantee, right?
Yes, and but it ends, so this grant was actually created by the Indiana Economic Development Foundation in twenty twenty one. Um, and it ends December thirty first twenty twenty six, so we have two years this year and next year to get three milestones done. And I don't know if they've. If when I first started applied for the grant, we were the only ones in Indiana who's applied for um money.
So who's applying for the grant, us, you, or Mammoth?
It as far as I'm concerned, well, as far as I understand it. It's a grant provided by Indiana Economic Development Foundation to the solar companies that they can use board infrastructure in a certain. County government, city towns, um if it deals with solar. So but we actually fill out the grant, okay, I actually fill out the grant application.
I'm just gonna get this comment out of the way. We were always assured that there would never be any taxpayer money used to repave the roads and solar. Well, there is, honestly, because even if it is an Indiana Department grant, where do you think that money comes from? Comes from taxpayers. Everybody in this room, everybody in the state. So that's my two cents.
So I have a question. Um. We expect them to rebuild the road to the conditions they were at prior to the usage and maybe just a little extra, is that correct? Or did we, or were we expecting to have a freeway?
Now, this, this is all before, well, several people years' time, but this is going back about four years. And I've looked over this, uh, she sent it to me earlier today, and there is virtually no obligation from Mammoth to help with the roads. And I think Dave, you were around when a lot of this happened.
No, we're not both, actually, we were together with Rick Ritzler when this was written.
So maybe you guys can kind of chime in on.
Yeah.
On your memory of what how this kind of happened.
Um, as we were putting this ordinance together, Rick got involved, the Seabees Highway Superintendent, and at that time, he was the one that brought the Pazer ratings here and so forth, and he eventually set that up as. You know, each road had a rating and it had to be repaired to at least the quality it was in before, and it's the way it was set up in the beginning.
Now, when you say set up, um, I mean, I don't see that documented on here, was that a verbal agreement?
Well, I can't remember if it was verbal, but that was the attention was going back to the Pazer ratings, he had had a rating for each road down there. And that was what they were supposed to be restored to.
Yeah.
Have they done that?
Well, you can't, so hypothetically, most of the roads down there are three, four, five, well, they're now twos, threes. You can't restore a road from a two to a four, like, there's no.
No, and and I totally understand that, but what are we expecting and what are they willing to do? And I want to, I want to say that we have an obligation to as a county. They're they're not, they shouldn't be obligated to make that road perfect, but that that just wouldn't be right. But um.
Bruce, uh, would you mind, Chris has always been very transparent, would you mind if we let him kind of chime in on?
I would like him to.
Yeah.
Hey, so there has been ongoing meetings and and our colleague Jason Van Dusen is on the Zoom, and he was involved with Rachel in discussing the process that you're talking about, condition the roads before the project, condition the roads after, and what we would be obligated to pay.
I believe there was actually a survey done before you guys start.
Actually, what they do is they video it, because when we, when we negotiate, I'm starting to remember a little more, when we, when we negotiate it, that's just the standard way, like, it's not something that was just for this agreement. That's the standard way to evaluate and pay back for the roads by the Pazer rating. Um, and in part C, it says developer shall compensate Stark County for all damage caused to the roads at the rate of the Stark County's cost to repair plus five percent, so that's where you're getting that from, uh, Bruce.
That that during the whole project, so you know, we have during the whole project, they've always paid the invoices that we sent them for damaging roads. Like a whole folder of invoices that are all paid.
Sure, sure.
So that what you're talking about was during the project.
But I heard that several times over, and aren't we holding Hoosier to that on their next, uh, didn't we discuss that already?
Yes.
Now, the other thing too, though, is that part of the process, like, this is light, I I will agree, like, this explanation is light here, this, this doesn't look like all the documents, all the pages that we, so it's, something's missing here for me too, that I, that, that this is light. Now, the other thing was that they're also required to do a video of the roads before they got started, there's a video inventory, and it was done by a third party in engineering, which is also common to be done in a project like this too, I don't know who's holding that, I don't know who's holding that information, I don't know who reviewed it, but I'm guessing that that's where you got your, where the Pazer ratings are now, right, like, you got that something, right?
There there was a consultant that did the Pazer before the project started and after the project ended. Then I have a whole two binders full of the Pazer ratings at the end of the project, we compared that to the Pazer ratings that we did at the end of the project in my own department, I'm sure very similar. Um, and then there was an amount that they come up with.
Right, and 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 that's the thing right there, I'd like to know where this amount came up, because there's no way you can take a road that's a two and make it a four, that's impossible. And I actually talked to El Cap and talked to several other county highways, and there is no magic formula where, okay, this road was a two, but if it was a four, it was fifty thousand dollars a mile, there is no magic formula, so I don't know where this two hundred sixty thousand dollars.
Well, we can explain that.
Yeah, where that came up, so explain that as well.
Well, before we go to that, can I just ask one question, we have counsel here that was with us at the same time, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but would you agree that between the two entities that we did agree that that the roads would be restored to their original condition based on Pazer rating, like, is, like I said, I'm I'm not seeing everything here.
Well, the the gap in Pazer rating would be compensated.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and Lock Mueller performed.
Lockman.
Yeah, with buddies then, they did the road video and they they did the Pazer setup. And so this amount that Rachel is discussing came from the pre-Pazer rating, the post-Pazer rating, and then cost took the cost to restore the road of the asphalt on a per mile basis, and then multiplied that by the percentage of degradation, so if it was three hundred fifty thousand, I don't know what the exact point was, we used three hundred and forty thousand dollars a mile um for the asphalt, a hundred and ten for chip and seal, and a thirty for gravel, um, which that was based on complete. That was based on.
Based on ten, that was based on ten.
Yes. And so what we didn't account for in that two sixty number was the improvement to the stone gravel roads. Those, we think those were increased by forty four percent, but we just left that aside, the only roads that were degraded in any way were the asphalt, and they went from an average of four forty to an average of three five, and I believe the nine percent is is the decrease symbol.
And that where you come up with first figure?
Can I get a copy of that?
Sometimes.
You can keep that one.
Oh, okay. Will you make me a copy of that?
That's a bold.
When you get it back to the office, yeah, please.
So so you're saying now the average was, is it three, is it three, five on those roads, I thought we said it was like a two?
Well, between three and four.
That that it's it's listed in a, in a, the third page.
Because I've I've done quite a few Pazer ratings all over, actually, all over Northern Indiana.
Rachel, that generally consisted of our conversation back in November.
But.
Yeah.
You have a copy. Is this the same one you gave Rachel?
Yep, okay, good.
You don't have to give me one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Number seven.
You can remember.
Yeah, I see the math, how you came up with it.
So then we were.
Actually, I agree, but.
So we were talking, and I mean. That money's not gonna do one really, so this grant was available, and that's how this grant came up, or applying for the grant came up.
And it's fair to say the grant was set up for the jurisdictions where Mammoth was operating. So that that's why, you know, San Diego County can do it. At that meeting, discuss, explore what the grant looks like, see what it becomes the reality.
Yeah, we weren't even sure if we, if, you know, uh, when we started paying growth, we qualify for the grant, so we started as a very.
So we, but we know that we will qualify.
Yeah, so we actually were approved for the grant, but.
No, it was.
I'm holding off on, so I mean, the paperwork because of this discussion.
For the grant, take care of all the issues. All but.
All but four.
You gotta pay for that, but I'm sorry for that question. You mind, yeah, go ahead.
A question at the last commissioner's meeting, Rachel said it was an ultimatum. We either get the grant for one point two million or we get two hundred sixty thousand. Why is there an ultimatum? There, the grant is tax money. It's their money, so should that come to us once also the two sixty? Why is it one or the other? Because if we only get the grant, then that's the taxpayers' money, and Mammoth is not putting any of their ag money into repairing these.
And then we have to put more taxpayers' money into it of the counties.
But to me, in good faith, we should get home.
I, but that, but you have to understand too, though, that this grant, like, they could just say, we're gonna give you half and we're gonna give plastic.
At least it goes back to the taxpayers, and they still have to pay their two hundred sixty thousand.
Sure, right now, though, there, I mean, there's no decision right now, Teresa, we're, that's what we're hoping today.
We want everybody to to think, I mean, if if you let them get away with just giving us the one point two million dollar grant, they actually pay nothing for it.
And that's what we should just ask them, where's the difference? Well, I think we're working on that.
Would Mammoth be, would Mammoth be willing to consider the forty nine thousand? I mean, let's just throw that out there, I mean.
One thing I got, David.
Okay, sorry.
And Chris, and I don't remember your name.
Chris.
Yours is Chris also, okay, so when we did the last meeting, I talked to you about a culvert, Ed, I don't believe you was there, but you guys were there, I still want that considered after. Uh, Jason, Jason, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
You remember the culvert deal?
Uh, I remember the conversation about the culvert and.
I'm gonna check for Rachel and I, and see if we can do a cheaper culvert instead of the concrete.
Oh, boy. I thought you were just moving forward, repairing that culvert to the original design, be.
Yeah, you guys are gonna check with another engineer, I just wanted to see if he's done it or not.
Uh, actually, there was a.
We gotta have an engineer.
Move that forward, I guess we kind of just focused on the the grant.
Do you want to engineer a pay to replace it with, you have some?
Well, we was gonna go with just a plain old culvert, because it's a great, yeah.
Yeah, because it's a real, it's a real small ditch.
Yes.
And I don't know if that was, might have been even like an old WPA project, because there's no reason God's name. There's not a bunch of scour, there's nothing else, I don't know why that culvert is there.
We talked to you guys about replacing, that was crazy price for to replace it like it is.
Several hundred brands.
You guys are gonna check for me.
Yep.
Have an engineer look at it, see if we could reduce it to.
The only, the only reason I can ever think that might have did, might have been done is due to the um, to the amount of cover. You don't want top.
It's all three fifty east.
Still, you can do a moly flame or or an electrical, I mean, there's ways to get rid of it.
And that was my biggest thing, David, I didn't want to interrupt you, but.
No, I remember you saying that.
That's separate, yeah, we talked about that separate from that.
Would Mammoth consider the forty nine thousand plus the culvert, just to, you know, like, just so we can put this to bed and move forward as partners, I mean, that might, it might might be the easiest way, it sounds like, you know, my colleagues are, you know, interest, I don't want to speak for them, are you guys interested in that? Are you interested in them covering the other costs?
I'll tell you what I'm interested in, I'm interested in not costing taxpayers any money, that's what I'm interested in. Plain and simple. I mean, plain and simple.
But you're saying no grant or nothing, Tom?
I mean, it's like, it all comes down to like, if you just.
But you still can do a moly clay or or an electrical, I mean, there's ways to get rid of it.
And that was my biggest thing, David, I didn't wanna interrupt you, but.
I remember you saying that.
That's separate. Yeah, we talked about that separate from.
Would Mammoth consider the forty nine thousand plus the cover just to, you know, like, just so we can put this to bed and move forward as partners, I mean, that might. Might might be the easiest way, it sounds like, you know, my colleagues are, you know, interest. I don't wanna speak for them, are you guys interested in that? Are you interested in them covering the other costs?
I'll tell you what I'm interested in, I'm interested in not costing taxpayers any money, that's what I'm interested in. Plain and simple. I mean, plain and simple.
But you're saying no grant or nothing, Todd?
I mean, it's like. It all comes down to like. If you do this. It's like blood money. Okay, it's like we're backed into these corners by everybody and if you don't do this, there's what's gonna happen. And I mean, I'm pretty much about done with all that.
Just to deep, there there was never, as I understand the discussion, that ever an ultimatum this or that, I mean, that's.
Well, the the way it came down to me was. I can't feel that way because it's like, well, you know, if you guys want the two hundred sixty thousand two that you're due. Well, we'll just take half of that grant money and we'll use it on Plastec County and then we're screwed even worse than what we are now.
So that's a possibility.
Well, yeah, but I don't, I don't like to even hear about possibilities. What the facts, truth, what we're gonna do.
And when was that said, I I might, I must have been sleeping through it.
Our last meeting.
Sure. That's material. How much it costs for central paving to make it, the total cost for materials, that is much shorter than mine's done. Well, there has to be some sort of um, match to the grant. They agreed that that would be our.
It's not free, Miles, it's not free. Nothing's free.
But but here's what I know about. If we don't apply for it, somebody else. Poor public servants if we did not apply for that grant.
Yes.
Uh, did somebody kick us in the butt for that? And then the other thought that I have. Is why, uh, uh. What level that we're speaking here, what level does that bring the roads back up?
Ten.
Well, it'd bring it up to ten or nine, it depends. It is possible, prob- probably highly unlikely.
Shock to begin with. And they did damn shit, why would we expect them to to make them any better, I?
I'm here, 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 here's the, here's the reason, I mean, this is probably a lame ass reason, but. Where it is, it's impossible, I take the road from the two and make it a four.
I understand that.
For materials.
Not that, it's the fact that possibly they said if you take the one point two, you don't get the two sixty. That's what bothers me.
I think like, like Chris had said, Teresa, that was never, that was just a figure of speech, I guess. Yes, but not a threat from me.
And they do both.
You said responsibility.
Yes, it's a possibility.
But possibility.
Lots of possibility.
Ability turned into, it turned into probable.
So that they are putting some of their own money into repairing. Not those tax costs.
All right, so I'm gonna, she kind of handed this to us, but her and I just went over this and I'm a numbers guy, so I like to know numbers, okay? So. This number here all adds up, third column over. And. That makes us short more like a hundred and seventeen thousand, but she can get an additional grant for sixty seven thousand. And she's confident she can get that, okay, that makes us short forty nine thousand five hundred and twenty two dollars. That's all pretty good guesstimates, it's gonna be pretty close. The number that we're not talking about here is she's not compensating for the labor of the county doing it in these numbers.
That's just materials.
This is just materials. And her and I have talked separately a couple of times and to hire milestone to come in and lay this. Would be about one point three million dollars. So that would be a cost if we were to just contract that out. And I think that's a number that we should be talking about because. We're using county resources to repave these roads, now granted, we're going from fours to tens, which is a huge improvement. But, yeah, right, but still, I mean, that's a much bigger improvement than, you know, going from a four to a six. So we're really short, if you wanna talk dollars, one point three, one point four million dollars. Which is about half the cost of this whole project. But that's, of course, if we were to hire a contractor to do it. She's, what her thought is, is we pay our county employees anyway. So it makes sense to have our county employees do it because the cost is much lower.
And that would compensate for the difference in the quality of the road. If, if we ate the labor from our our employees.
We should eat the labor.
How much are we missing, Rachel, on the labor?
Hundred thousand?
That's county numbers. And if we were to hire it done, you're looking at about.
What was that number, one sixty three, right? Is what you think for sure?
County Highway does, it's not gonna be a ten. No offense, but you're not gonna, you're not gonna pay the bug and make it a ten. It's gonna probably be an eight, which is very, or seven even, it's fine.
But that's what the county providing flow.
Right.
But again, that's moving the roads beyond where they.
So are we asking? Mammoth to consider one fifty three then, plus the culvert?
That's what I was just gonna ask him, would they consider that? The the labor of the county highway and the forty nine and the cul- uh, cul.
Are you talking to one forty nine down or?
This page here, Bruce, it's the hundred and four over to your right. That's the labor for the county employees. And then the forty nine thousand that were short after the grant.
And if we were to hire it, we're still talking one point three million dollars.
If we hired it out, not do it.
Right.
Did you say before you were Rachel at the last meeting, it was gonna be one point two two five if we did it right versus one point three or where did I hear? Oh, no, the the grants, I'm sorry, the grant. So actually, we'll be taking the grant, so we can look another way too, the grant plus seventy five thousand and hired out is another option.
Well, but that wouldn't cover any labor, the the hired out, that's just labor, that would.
That was just the. Oh, okay.
The one point two two five is materials.
All right, you got me excited when you said. I shoot, that's a deal, the farmers don't have to work, that's my job's going, we're looking at other stuff. Got you.
With other laborers too, man. Just to help them out for the.
Yeah.
The highest estimates you want to find one of them.
Yeah, that's. That's the.
It's the one that we don't need.
The other thing to consider is if we put all of our resources repaving this. Is our paving plan gonna be the shepherd?
No. So basically, what I would do is that month and a half that we would be chip sealing, I would not chip seal this year, we'll be paving Mammoth.
So that's, that's like fifteen thousand five hundred tons.
But that won't be it all done.
Well, milestone one and two will get done, milestone three is next year.
I guess what I'm getting at is how much maintenance work in the county is gonna be put on the back burner because we're focused on this.
I want one, but I wouldn't do that.
Well, you just mentioned chip and seal.
And Todd and I talked about that and the not chip sealing for one more year is not detrimental.
You know, way longer than that. Roads part of my house to town, there is a till, it's up for ten years, just finally got chip sealed. I mean, all, the only thing chips on those is really protect, that that oil dries out. So that's really all it's doing is to seal on the top of it, holding it, you know, together from losing the moisture and then breaking apart. And that's why you use a lot of weight here, so when that's time to let go of whatever water it needs to let roll. You know.
I would be okay. Not have a chip ceiling and get some of these done, just for sure. The public we are completing, they're already here behind. Awesome, and you're gonna patch it up.
So.
Okay, I've been, I've been patching all this.
So that, so that grant, that two hundred and whatever it is.
One point two two five?
Okay, whatever. So. That grant can be used. It's not limited to material, right? It just works out, it just works out that that grant is that much and this is how much we're gonna need to spend and that's the reason.
But we have to do a match to the grant.
Okay, okay.
So we, so I talked to them and I said, okay, well, what about our payroll as a match?
You said twelve miles, right?
Yes.
We're, we're talking two inches, what we're talking?
Yes, two inches.
So you're saying we have to match this grant and we'll do that with the labor cost?
Yes, it is, it is a type of grant that has a match and they agreed that they would.
Are you guys willing that we would get the whole one point two in the grant?
That was, that was definitely what we wanted to discuss, is you're getting all one point two million of the grant.
I'm all for, I'm all for getting everything that we can get better. I honestly, in my, in my conscience. I can't see. Them building us a complete brand new road when that wasn't what it was to start with and, uh, just call me dumb, call me old. But I just, in good conscience, couldn't, uh, couldn't hold them to that, I I don't think it's right. Well, that's what I just asked. And I, and I think about the improvement that we'll have on these other roads, I I drive them because I passed through that church over there and.
The culvert. We set aside the culvert discussion right now until we get. Okay on what we need to build.
Absolutely.
The one, my chief, the one fifty four, the forty nine and the the labor which would get you. Over and above. The restoration to cover the county labor.
So you're talking the grant, the one over four, whatever, one twenty one and the forty nine, right? That would come up? You guys would agree to that?
That's right, yes.
That's.
Or, no, the culverts, okay, so culvert's out of the. Ching font for the grant, which is one oh four, I think. And the other forty nine, we're saying.
So that comes up to the one fifty three that you were talking about. I seen the damage they did out to you guys' place and that, that was only right that they, that they fixed that.
So I I I don't know about this, don't start. I don't know if you know this either, Rachel, I don't, you guys probably don't know for sure. I wonder if there was any, um, any damage done to any property, too many section corners.
I don't know.
You know, during all the, you know, the construction. Because you have legal, there's a legal responsibility to repair those. And I don't know, I don't know if there was. That would be a conversation with the surveyor. And I mean, they have a legal op- op- obligation, I guess it would. I was responsible to to repair those and and put them back right, but I don't, I don't know if there even was any. I mean, would, I would hazard to guess there would be. Unless there was a dirt road or something where it got, of course, you guys need to be ready to maintenance on it or anything. I think the roads. Well, the section parts are right in front of the road. Right, right, yeah, there are the roads, yeah, but I've been talking just from standpoint of the equipment damage shown, but I don't know, I don't have.
But if they're obligated, we're gonna fit that in.
Yeah, that, no, I mean, they're obligated if there is, but that, that's really another discussion too, really.
I guess I would assume you could build that out. Just like you did the other.
That'd be totally acceptable.
If you found it.
Yeah.
And and build that out.
Yeah.
Road damage.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a clear statement. Okay. Right, Bill?
Yes, sir.
Two counties, we're sitting here.
I have a question, changing companies a little bit about. Does anyone know who paid for the road paving in the next era project? Was that Grant funding or was that next era? They won't grant that I know of.
Yeah, I'm sure it was all next year.
It was all next year.
Right, it used to dream, it was different.
Yeah, which is unfortunate for everybody that we didn't have consistency in everything. Yeah, and that's not new, that's definitely not your fault.
Well, we also, I mean, one thing I want really third for the public though, because we get bashed about this stuff all the time, we were learning as we were going. Like, nobody in the state knew anything, like, nobody in the country gave us any advice, like, we had to start with what little information we had, right?
Yeah.
It was only a few people, we did a lot of research, a ton of research, Marty Lucas did research, we did research. You know what I'm saying? And and we used what we had at the time and then that's why it evolved and that's why the third one's gonna be different, you know, and that's why other counties. Are asking for how we did it, our learning and asking information how we did it, I mean, you know. Every person that was involved in this did their best to try to, you know, get the best deal for the county, it wasn't that people were like. You know, like taking a knee or whatever, that that did not happen, we've worked hard on this.
Yeah, we, I mean, we took Jasper County's efforts and enhanced it and made it better from what they had at that time.
Yeah.
I'm gonna throw something else out there. Take it or leave it. I've watched Black Gold harvest potatoes out there on these very same roads. With, who knows how much weight are on them, I'm, I'm not absolutely sure. That the solar people did all this damage, I I, and I'm just trying to be honest and real.
Who's it with, on that, or you guys still on?
I hate to say it, I don't know what choice we have, right?
The only thing that I still have hesitation about is I'm still very skeptical that we can pave all of this in one year. And. I just think there's a lot of miles. Especially with a somewhat new crew. Um, the expectations being set awfully high for an unseasoned crew. And that's my biggest concern and I'd love to see the county or Mammoth work with us. Potentially a little bit more so we can hire some of this paving done. Uh, cause I, I just don't see it realistic for all this to happen and keep up with everything else within a reasonable expectation in the county. So I'll just put that out there for more discussion, right?
They have to get milestone one and two done, is that right?
Who are you talking about toes?
Well, well.
We're just them two and everything.
For all, um, all three milestones.
I E D C to see if we can create some, I don't know, you've had those conversations. I haven't, but but they. They pushed back on the time.
This grant is only available till December thirty first, twenty twenty six, so hypothetically, we could do milestone one this year, milestone two and three next year. We just have to have all the work done by twenty twenty six.
So we're gonna do half of them this year and half of them next year, would that be feasible and possible?
I mean, we, I could switch around the milestones a little bit where we could do one, you know, milestone one this year and milestone two and three next year.
Yes, split that maybe in half instead of.
Yeah. This particular grant just ends December thirty first.
That that covered Mike's concern, but then some people are probably gonna hear complaints from constituents that are gonna say, why is that my road getting done sooner than later?
It kind of covers my concern, but we had a very aggressive plan in the county to begin with for what we were gonna pave. Along with this.
Right.
That, that's still quite an ask for a somewhat new crew, in my opinion.
And, and you know, the beauty of it, Mike, you know, it's Rachel, Bill, you know, this, probably very good, but. Probably is so much more forgiving than than Hot Mix, there was like no, there was like no comparison. There's like no.
Was that quote for one point three, Todd, for H M A?
Was that quote for one point three tied for H M A? I just him a lot is probably right.
No, that's just to lay the plug. Yeah, that's still a plug and that's just the labor to lay it. That's all the equipment as they usually.
So if we can't do it all this year and we we are thinking about doing. Some of it next year, how do we hedge the cost of that material to hedge it? Uh, because it's gonna be.
Yeah, of course, next year it'll cost might be different as far as oil prices, aggregate prices. It may go up and may go down. I mean, actually, oil prices didn't change too much.
Figure all that out so we can rebuy all that stuff.
Yeah, I could have all the elevens. I could have all the sands.
That's your head.
It's just the oil would be really good to price that out.
So here would be a thought. She had a hundred and four thousand built in her county. What if we took the one point three that's just estimated right now and split that with Mammoth? The county paid half of it, they paid half, and we just hire all of the Mammoth project done with pub and outside labor.
That'd be if they're willing to pay for that, though.
But that would eliminate the county being involved with the work.
Yeah, but it it be involved with us coming up six hundred thousand dollars.
We're getting a lot of good roads.
Yeah.
At that point.
But but the file is. Next year, seven bill one, when that kicks in, we're gonna have some really, really hard choices to make. And there's some other things that's gonna be some hard choices to make. I mean, I'm I'm. I'm really. Not into us. And I understand what you're saying, Mike, and I agree with you. If we have this bottom pit of money, that would be perfect, but we don't have a bottom spit of money. I mean, I don't expect after. Might do some positions go to part time, might be some positions eliminated. I mean, who knows? We don't know.
If they're willing, they either.
I mean, the. There's no complex now and they're supposed to make it simpler, but I'll be honest with you, I don't understand any of it. So I mean, that's that's my thought on it. That's just me talking.
On some way, I get what you're saying. Have to hook it to get it done, but if we can do like Rachel said, and just do milestone one without getting in trouble with the grant. And then it'll go on that one.
I mean, all I I understand.
My concern is we take on this project and we don't get other stuff done in the county and then we get a black eye because that stuff's not good. That's that's just my big concern.
All I can do is try and if if we get back, we'll come to you and they hate. Can do it.
How they get it. If if we skip that. For a year. It's not like the end of the world. You know, it's that that pavement's not gonna deteriorate in one year because. Because we didn't ship seal the next year.
I guess my thought is more the whole package, the entire maintenance crew and all the stuff they do in a summer. You know, are we gonna get calls in August as to, okay, our road didn't get mowed this year or you know, you know what I'm getting on?
They're they're all part time movers, so it's not gonna take away you that. I don't know how many days you've had scheduled for chip seal. I mean, do you know?
Actually, a month, month and a half.
Yeah, so. So right there, that month, month and a half should be should be enough time, I would think. To do like milestone one is considerably more than is is more than milestone two and three not put together, but it's more. So I don't even know. Do you have to even tell them milestones?
I I can, I'm pretty sure I can manipulate this spreadsheet and the roads however I want to manipulate them.
Yeah, when you do a smaller road or whatever.
Yeah.
You know, we're sacrificing chip seal elsewhere in the county to work on this project.
No, I I agree. I imagine. I know what you're saying.
Well, it might make more sense to do, like you said, and just split it. Do the since it's allowable, do the one and twenty six. The other one and twenty six and still do part of the chip seal in there. You know?
It's a possibility. Again, I'm just looking at it from a county citizen perspective. I don't want the county to feel like we're sacrificing work that was.
Yeah, everything's getting, everything's getting focused over there.
Right.
Yes, I get it.
Well, I'd much rather just pay the bill and that all gets taken care of and the maintenance goes on as well.
I I agree with you totally, but if you're looking at it from a citizen perspective, I don't live over there. And and it it's like, why am I gonna spend, why are we gonna spend six hundred thousand dollars of taxpayers' money? To fix something up that we really had nothing to do with. None of the damage. That's the way I would.
We could just take the two sixty then and then pay for it ourselves. I mean, that's the other option.
No, the other option is. If if we make an agreement. Where they pay whatever, what what would be signed one fifty something in the Culver, but one fifty five in the Culver, a separate issue.
In the grant.
In the grant. And then the county, we we have no, we have no taxpayers' money of the county's money and.
Going out to them.
Going out, except for the the I E D C grant, which. And I agree, that's still taxpayer money. But like Dave says, if we don't take it, somebody else.
Been told in many meetings that taxpayers would not have to pay for anything.
We haven't told that.
Yeah, they told that a lot.
Yep.
We would all be getting here and taxpayers would be having a whole problem.
But that offer's on the table. They're offering the two sixty six. That covers that. That brings it back. Right? I mean, that that is a stability and then we don't take the grant. Like, okay, I mean, maybe we should take a poll from the from some people in the county to find out. Do you guys want us to fix the roads and not pay it out of Stark County dollars?
That that two hundred sixty six dollars won't do anything.
But what I'm saying, though, is that they're only required to bring the roads back to where they were when they started.
Well, then we should tell them. We should tell them that that's bringing it back to the way they were and they can figure out how they're gonna do it.
Well, the consulting firm says it's two hundred sixty six thousand dollars.
No, they said that's the difference. That's that's a monetary value. That's not putting them back to the way they were. Okay? I'll tell you right now. You'd probably spend twice as much as much money trying to make the roads worse than to make them good. So if the agreement is they're supposed to bring the roads back to what the way they were. Have at it. Bring them back. They tell me how you're gonna do it. Anybody that has any kind of experience with roads and they know that that is not, it's not possible.
Do we get another consultant to review what Lockman says?
The thing doesn't matter. I mean.
I mean, it's I don't know. I don't really know. Lockman, should we trust?
Are we going by the agreement or are we going by the ordinance?
The ordinance is discussing repairing the damage to the roads.
Well, I'm curious about the performance bond.
Yeah, but we we I sent that over today.
What?
The performance bond.
Eighteen million, man.
I don't see it. Three for the roads.
Three million dollars.
So I don't understand your, this is the beef. If we get the grant and they pay the hundred and fifty three in the Culver. What what are what is the what is the beef here? I don't quite. Won't it make us a hundred percent, Tom? Yeah, no, and and with that, if I'm understanding what you're all talking about. Going with those figures, it also brings a road that was a four up to a.
Ten.
Right. So I mean, and it was way better than what they were.
And this would pay for the labor from the county to do that as well, not just the. One to two phaser rating of damage that we need to cause.
Yeah, I don't I don't I don't buy any of that phaser rating damage crap, the the monetary amount, because there's no way, there's no way to quantify that. I know I know you added it all together and divided by percentage, but that's just some adamant number. Me, that doesn't mean anything.
Would you guys mind if I, Charlie, are you still on?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hey, Charlie, I know you've been listening. Um, I'd love to hear your perspective on this. You were around when it happened and there's been a lot of good discussion here.
I'll just listen in, uh. I mean. My thoughts are. I've heard it come up, but. I think. Should should split the project. I mean, take the grant. I I mean, everybody's saying, I mean, that's the only way them roads are gonna get fixed. So what would they should be, so? I don't know if they if I am just afraid if we just let them. I don't know, do what they want. Them roads aren't gonna be good, so. I think it's better in better hands if we do it ourselves.
He's saying to them, take the grant and uh have them help with covering our labor.
I mean. I'm for that myself. I'm not gonna say or deny it any longer. I think we should accept the grant, accept their money to go with it. Those people out there deserves deserve those roads to be brought back up to shape. They put up with this project throughout the whole time. If we don't take the grant, somebody else is going to. We might as well utilize it. We don't give this opportunity very often.
Yeah, I'm definitely in favor of us taking the grant. I would just like to see a little bit more funds to help cover some labor so we can hire some more of it done. Just to get it done. I'm not saying necessarily all of it, but if we could hire some more of it done, I think it would take less off of. Our county employees trying to get that much done in a year.
So they they told they told you a million two for the twelve miles?
Hundred fourteen thousand dollars a mile.
Yes.
That was estimated.
That's about right.
Yeah, that's pretty close.
What is your labor cost per mile?
My labor cost per mile. About six thousand one hundred twenty four dollars.
Six thousand dollars per mile. We got twelve mile. If everything goes perfect, that's seventy two thousand dollars.
Seventy five, sixty seven or, yeah.
No, that's not figuring in the wear and tear on all of our equipment.
Yeah, I I understand that.
Right.
Tom, can someone bring up that performance bond? There's three million.
Yeah, it's three million dollar performance bond. I mean. I mean, attorney's not here. I'd ask him would we just full bond?
Don't you have to follow them something to full the bond or no?
Performance bond. That is, if they don't meet the criteria, that's listed in that bond, it's listed in the ordinance. I mean, I don't know. I'm not a lawyer. These guys are lawyers.
Or are they not meeting?
Um, damage to roads right here, due to maintenance or destructions, eight damaged roads. There you go, right there.
But isn't the damage to the roads at two hundred and some thousand dollars?
Oh, this says, this doesn't.
Compensates Stark County for any damage to the public roads. We're proposing to compensate you for the damage to the public roads.
Okay, I'm just.
I I guess my thought is, you know, we're we're kind of throwing out these numbers of you guys pitching in a extra hundred and fifty thousand. I guess in my mind, I'm I'm thinking a number of pitching in closer to around five hundred thousand so we could hire some more of this done. Just to get it done. Then it's done off your guys' books. You guys don't have to stress it. It's done on our end and we all move on. Now, I'm not saying we'd hire it all done, but even if we hired. Four or five miles of it done.
That'd be the five hundred thousand. And that's just the labor.
Right. But you know, if we hired, let's just say milestone one. If if they helped contribute to that and we hired that section done and we focused on the other two and. And uh over the next couple of years, that helps spread some of this work out to get it done quicker.
Cause we originally had to figure milestone one to go by those. That's ninety seven hundred times and the other two put together are almost almost fifteen thousand. For the other two, but. But if you can do. Yeah, if we could do that and then we could maybe shake them some part in milestone two or something.
Right. We get more done in a year.
That's possible, Chris?
That's completely different number. Um, and it's covering a lot more than the damage that we caused. And one of the concerns here about the the chip and seal that's all on the stage. I mean, at some point, you're you're pushing back some, but you're also accelerating maintenance on these roads. That at some point will be able to catch back up. That you won't be performing, but would be scheduled sometime in the next coming year.
Yeah.
And get it.
Why cycle them?
Twelve miles is just milestone one and two. I don't know how much miles and.
Oh, so we're only talking milestone one and two, not even three.
I was, when I thought I had twelve miles, that's not, that was just what I would be getting done this year.
Okay, that was because then the numbers didn't, they didn't add up.
Twelve miles.
One other question, Chris. Would you guys consider the grant and the whatever you offered this first time?
The one fifty four?
No, the first meeting we had, you offered two. Would you consider the grant and that?
Yeah.
And I would, I would, I wouldn't, I would tend to rule that.
And then Mike would get, like you say, even three or four miles down.
Well, you don't wanna be able to do like one.
That would go toward.
Yeah.
And our guys.
But that's what I'm saying. This is for the whole. I wish we would. Take that, you did to uh someone doing work. My opinion, would this eat the light, lights?
Then we're paying uh. Then the county's paying more for the roads.
We can't decide that today. I mean, we can certainly discuss it. But I mean, that's more. Than counties damage objectively. Even your out of pocket. We're certainly happy to cover the out of pocket costs.
Right.
Here to get this repaired.
There's a commissioners meeting Monday. You could always just carry it to that. I mean, you guys can make your decision anyways.
Well, I can't carry the council's decision until it's next council meeting, though, because.
Council, it's a commissioner's decision, isn't it?
Well, it's also council too. If we need a, if. You're not gonna, they're not gonna decide on just the hundred fifty three thousand, then I'm gonna need more money from council to go another avenue.
Yeah, so that's. Well, whatever you guys do with with that.
Need everybody to agree on something.
Wait, are you saying if they don't do the grant?
No, if we don't do it today. She's not gonna know for another month.
I can't. This can't go very long because I have to start.
They have me hanging up Monday.
I know, but.
We got three. We got Charlie on there, me and Mike sitting here. I agree, Bill, we take the hundred fifty, whatever it was in the grant. You know. And work.
Like, if that's what they decide, then we're all right. I don't need counsel. But if that's not what they're gonna decide, I would possibly need counsel, depending on where we're getting the actual money from.
So if that's what they agree.
Charlie, are you still on there?
What what about?
Yeah, I'm here.
If if they they won't agree to two sixty because I under- I can understand that and we agree to one fifty, so why don't we split the difference? At like two hundred thousand. Difference between. Difference from the one, from the hundred fifty two that we talked about for all the damages versus Danny's two hundred sixty thousand. What the actual damages were. So if we just split it at two hundred thousand.
The grant and two hundred thousand. For a decision today. Would you be all right with that, Charlie?
Yeah, I'd be fine with that.
So Rachel, let me ask you. So literally, the council doesn't have a dog in the hunt, really?
No, dog in the service.
Well, the only reason the council would have to play into it is if there was extra funds. That's why we wanted to do joint meeting. And I also wanted to see what y'all thought.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
I would admit it anyways.
Well, they're uh discussing. Does anybody have anything in the public they want?
Yeah, a question.
So is that uh?
What would you think of that project?
Yeah.
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 It's been bad all along.
Yeah.
What would you think of that proposal? If they do two hundred and the Culver.
We, she's factored in money to have it made.
I'm sure the company gonna come in and make it for us.
They're the ones who made it. They made it back when I was there. Yeah, because. Having that equipment, using it for two, three months out of the year doesn't even make any sense.
Not right now.
They make so, so much money for that equipment. It doesn't make any sense. When I first looked there, they were.
Okay. So we're looking at this coming down the road. Um, the performance bond, that was what I was curious about. We have a much larger performance bond than you all. But is the problem with the performance bond and them not wanting to utilize that because of the state, it's a difference between where the roads were and what they will leave again and just have been.
Well.
We'll take this back to our road.
Yeah, un- unfortunately, the, in, into Dave's point, back then they just didn't know. But the road agreement that was made, and this was back in nineteen, so six years ago, it was extremely vague. And it really didn't leave a lot of obligation to the contractor. The road use agreements that have been made since this are a lot more detailed.
Yeah, like the last one for Next Barrow. I mean, so we got all, we got all hundred and forty roads everywhere. Yeah, I mean, you're right. Hear your point.
Yeah, so, yes, um, we can do the two hundred, close that out and then we wrap up the road use. It's, it's done. We're, we all agree. Culvert notwithstanding, that's separate and any section corners. And then once we make that payment, we release the bond.
Soon as, soon as the grant comes through and, and we know the money's in place, then yeah.
So well, the first, I mean, I guess it's in its phase.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I would want Justin to draw this up.
Yeah.
And get it to you folks.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with anything that comes up with.
And that's it. Rachel gets the sixty seven or whatever missing. You probably know about that, Chris.
Yeah, the, are you talking about the culvert now or the?
No, for the.
Right, for the, for the money.
Yeah.
And Rachel, will you just let us know?
Yeah, so I have the.
Just do you wanna invoice us that?
Oh.
We can consider it like.
The two hundred thousand?
Yeah.
With Justin's agreement for the two hundred thousand. So I have the grant agreement for the one point two two five million that I need signed if we're moving forward with the grant. This is what I need signed and approved. Justin did review it.
Justin has reviewed this.
So you guys didn't do, make, make, make the motion to approve the, um,
Grant.
To prove the, the grant plus the two hundred thousand.
Two hundred.
Plus that, that, that's out of council's hands.
Hey, Charlie, are you on there?
Yeah.
Okay, so right now on the table is the, uh, economic development uh, agreement for the one point two two five million dollar grant that uh, Mammoth here is, is helping us with. Um, we gotta make a decision on it. I know you can't vote, but, um, any thoughts?
Um, I think what they come back with will be good, so.
Say he's good with it? So you're good with that, Charlie?
Yeah, sorry, I'm good with that.
Okay. I'll second the motion.
You did? You don't have a lesson, I mean?
We don't have anything to, any, there's no.
I can tell you on bridges.
And thanks for you guys' input.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
We did, did.
There's two of us.
Thank you.
First person.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate the thoughts.
We just need to get that drawn up. How soon could you guys get that? If we had it at the next commissioner meeting, with the agreement for the two hundred thousand, would that be okay?
Uh, to sign it or to?
Well, he can get you a copy, but we'll all have to sign them, assuming.
Yeah, I mean, I guess as soon as Justin gets that, we'll review it, okay it, and then whatever goes back to Justin, we'll have it tomorrow.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
And I'll get with Justin right away to get that.
So you're gonna contact.
Don't leave.
We're not charging those.
I have something to ask you. Things up here. Any comment real quick before we close the meeting?
My most in the gym.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
You guys. Not emotional.
You're more generous.
Yeah, we have most. We got another meeting. But you guys. Thank you, Rachel.
I'm gonna save it right back. Thank you.
We'll see you all.
See you.
Hey, see you guys. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, I think we'll see you Monday. Have a good one.
I'm like, I'm actually still going.